I'm going to call the city council meeting of May the 19th, 2015 to order. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Tenet.
Here.
Shotmar.
Here.
Lutcher.
Long.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Marsh.
Here.
Kenyon.
Here.
Petty.
Here.
Mayor Jordan.
Here. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the consent agenda tonight, the first order business that we have is approval of the May 5th, 2015 city council meeting minutes. Number two, a resolution to authorize the purchase of an expansion poly trailer from Rainmaker Sales Incorporated, Shawnee, Oklahoma, in the amount of $6,000 plus applicable sales taxes used by the water and sewer operations division and to approve a budget adjustment. I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda's read.
Still moved.
We have a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda's read. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Tenet.
Yes.
Shotmar.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
All right. Under new business, number one, an ordinance resoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN 15-5033 for approximately .30 acres located at 332 West Ash Street from RSF 4 residential single-family four units per acre to RMF 12 residential multifamily 12 units per acre. Kit?
Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby changes the zone classification of the following described property from residential single-family four units per acre to residential multifamily 12 units per acre as shown in Exhibits A and B attached here to and made a part hereof. And Section 2, that the city council, the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amends the official zoning map of the city of Fayetteville to reflect the zoning change provided in Section 1.
Okay, before we get into that, I forgot to make an announcement before we started the new business. If you're here to talk about C5 on new business, resolution to amend the master street plan by removing a bridge connection of Raven Lane over Clabber Creek, South Crystal Springs, Phase 3, it's been asked to be tabled, if you're here to, if you're waiting on that. Okay, so I just wanted to make that announcement.
That will be June 16th, is when that is going to be tabled.
June 16th. Just letting everybody know ahead of time. All right. Jeremy?
This particular item is located on Ash Street. You all saw this rezoning request in February when an appeal from a planning commission denial came before the planning commission and ultimately before the city council. The property is located mid-block between Gregg Avenue and Woolsey Avenue and contains approximately three tenths of an acre currently zoned RSF 4. The property is between an existing duplex to the east and to the west and it's a small apartment complex. The previous request, as was denied by the planning commission and the city council ultimately, was a request to rezone the property to RMF 24, which is a residential multifamily dwelling district, 24 units per acre maximum. This particular request is to rezone it to RMF 12, which is half of that density. Staff feels comfortable supporting that request. It's again, half the density that was requested before and a more appropriate and compatible transition between the two family and single-family neighborhood to the east and primarily multifamily developments to the west along Gregg Avenue. This zoning district for the size of the property would allow maximum three units on the property and so staff is supporting the application. Planning commission also voted six to zero in favor of this request.
Do you have to give a press case to the council or say something to the council before we?
Did you ask for the applicant? Okay, sorry, I couldn't hear you. Do you just want me to say kind of what we're trying to do here?
Yes.
Okay, so basically, what we have is a .3 acre lot. It's about one lot off of Gregg Street and there's an old house that's at the very front of the lot that we recently remodeled and the back of it is pretty open. It's a pretty large lot and so what we would like to do is take this new zoning of RMF 12 and build a duplex in the back of that lot and then bring in a driveway off of our apartment building on Gregg to access it. And so with RMF 12 zoning, it would allow for a maximum of three units there. Even if someone came in in the future, bought the lot remotely and clear cut it, it would still only be three units total. So we think that it would fit in this transition area as the lot is already surrounded by two apartment buildings with 16 units. It's across the street from eight townhomes and there's a duplex on the other side of it. So it's kind of, it's already in sort of a multifamily zone. I think if you drive through Fayetteville, you'll see triplexes and, you know, mixed multifamily in a lot of the neighborhoods that we have around here. It kind of fits in with the unique character and style. And the number one goal of the master plan is infill and revitalizing areas and so we want to infill this land and make housing available for people that need it. And then we also want to use some of the funding for building this duplex to completely reface the apartment buildings on Gregg, which I think will help to revitalize that whole area. We've invested over a million and a half dollars in this neighborhood alone just in the past year and I think that we, you know, our main goal is to make something that's tasteful on this lot and to really improve this neighborhood that's kind of a little older and there's been random new construction in the neighborhood but it's pretty stagnant as of now, so, you know, we want to do something nice. I'm not trying to like overrun or anything.
Okay.
That's pretty much it.
Does the council have any questions for the applicant or Jeremy Payne on this? Yes, go ahead, ma'am.
Is this plan to build a duplex any different than the plan you had before?
The plan before was to build a triplex, but after we had talked with the contractor and kind of looked at the lot again, it seemed like really a duplex would fit better anyway and so it makes more sense. Before I had someone helping me apply for the rezoning and they told me that we had to do RMF 24 and then whenever I went in to do it myself, I figured RMF 12 was actually a better zoning application for it.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Is there any public comment on this? See, now I'll bring it back to the council.
Well, I'm glad that you brought this back. I think this is a much more appropriate scale for development in this area and will make a nice transition between the two zones, so I do intend to support it.
We'll suspend the rules and go to the second reading.
Motion and second go to the second reading. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Tenet.
Yes.
Shotmar.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN 15-5033 for approximately .3 acres located at 23232 West Ash Street from residential single-family four units per acre to RMF 12 residential multifamily 12 units per acre.
I think we go to the third and final reading.
Second.
Motion and second to go to the third and final reading. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Tenet.
Yes.
Shotmar.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN 15-5033 for approximately three tenths of an acre located at 232 West Ash Street from residential single-family four units per acre to residential multifamily 12 units per acre.
What final comments do we have from the council? Yes, Mark?
There has been some voiced concerns by some neighbors worrying about the encroachment of multifamily into an established single-family neighborhood. We talked about this last time. Because of the concern, I probably cannot support this, but I was hoping there would be someone to speak on behalf of the neighborhood here this evening and obviously they didn't make it out, so there you go.
Yep. Any other final comments from the council? Sandra, would you please call the row?
Tenet.
Yes.
Shotmar.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
No.
Petty.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you all. Number two, an ordinance approving vacation 15-5020 submitted by Jeremy Kennedy for property located at 2288 North Hidden Creek Drive, vacate a portion of an existing utility easement. Kit?
Whereas the city council has the authority under ACA 1454104 to vacate public grounds or portions thereof which are not required for corporate purposes, and whereas the city council has determined that the following described portion of a utility easement is not required for corporate purposes. Now therefore, be ordained by the city council, the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that the city council, the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby vacates and abandons the following utility easement described in Exhibit B attached here to and made a part hereof. And Section 2, that a copy of this ordinance duly certified by the city clerk, along with the map attached and labeled Exhibit A, shall be filed in the office of recorded accounting and recorded in deed records of the county in Section 3, that this vacation approval is subject to the following condition of approval, that any damage or relocation of existing facilities shall be at the owner or developer's expense.
Jeremy?
This is a lot located at 2288 North Hidden Creek Drive in the Clabber Creek subdivision west of Fayetteville. It's a quarter acre lot, developed, a single-family home and existing patio in the back of the house. There's a portion of a 20-foot utility easement that the patio encroaches on, which is fine, that is currently allowed within our ordinances. However, the applicant is intending to construct a cover over that patio, which would be in violation unless the easement is vacated. Thus, the request for the easement, partial easement vacation, staff and all utility providers recommend approval of this request, as did the planning commission with a vote of seven to zero.
Okay. What questions have Jeremy on this from the council? Is there any public comment on this? See, now I'll bring it back to the council.
Maybe we should suspend the rules and go to the second reading.
Second.
Motion and second to go to the second reading. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Tenet.
Yes.
Shotmar.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
An ordinance approving VAC 15-5020 submitted by Jeremy Kennedy for a property located at 2288 North Hidden Creek Drive to vacate a portion of an existing utility easement.
Maybe we should suspend the rules and go to the third reading.
Second.
Motion and second to go to the third and final reading. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Tenet.
Yes.
Shotmar.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Okay, number three, an ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN 15-4965 for approximately 642 acres located at the southern end of Rupel Road from RA Residential Agriculture, RSF 1 residential single-family one unit per acre, RSF 4 residential single-family four units per acre, and RSF 8 residential single-family eight units per acre to NC Neighborhood Conservation, CS Community Services, UTT Urban Thoroughfare, and RA Residential Agricultural. Kit?
Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby changes the zone classification of the following described property from residential agricultural, from residential single-family one unit per acre, residential single-family four units per acre, residential single-family eight units per acre, to Neighborhood Conservation, Community Services, Urban Thoroughfare, and residential agriculture, as shown on Exhibit A attached here to and made a part hereof. And Section 2, that the city council, the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amends the official zoning map of the city of Fayetteville to reflect the zoning change provided in Section 1.
Chairman?
As the council knows, the city will soon begin the summer, in fact, a construction on a major new street connection by extending Rupel Road approximately one and a half miles south from the existing dead end adjacent to Al Creek Elementary School to Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard south. This road project will also be accompanied by a trail connection along that new corridor. It is being built as a principal arterial with four lanes and a boulevard, a cross-section that was approved by the council a number of months ago. A roundabout will also be installed approximately every half mile at the planned east-west collector streets where they intersect. Construction, as I mentioned, is scheduled to begin this summer and be completed by the end of next year. Rupel Road has long been planned as a major north-south transportation corridor in the city west of I-49. The completion of this major new infrastructure project will change traffic patterns and open up several hundred acres of farmland currently for development that currently has no or limited access. Staff has been in consultation with several developers and property owners in the vicinity that approached us that are anticipating building new development in this area after the completion of the city's project. With multiple developers discussing potential rezonings, developments of various pieces along the corridor, staff has initiated this rezoning proposal as a comprehensive proposal for the entire area to better enable the staff, the planning commission, and city council to think through the rezoning of the property as a whole rather than piecemeal applications from individual property owners. In addition, if you recall, when the city council approved the cross-section for Rupel Road, we all had a discussion about doing a master plan or initiating a zoning request and the mayor directed staff to prepare this request, this proposal for you all prior to the completion of the project. An overall property description, a large undeveloped area, approximately 642 acres is what we created with the boundary, essentially bound by north along Clabber Creek, south of Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, west along Groyles, and east along a natural divide with the mountain and to the east and neighborhoods to the northeast. Currently, the property is primarily zoned RSF 1, single-family residential, one unit per acre, but also consists of residential agricultural, RSF 8, which is eight units per acre, single-family, and RSF 4, single-family four units per acre. Staff is recommending that a form-based or mixed-use zoning be concentrated around Rupel Road corridor and the collector street intersections. We use the concept of a 10-minute walk or a half-mile corridor, a radius from those intersections, to try to ensure that there was adequate density to provide ability for transit in the future and also to look at the existing environmental constraints that we are aware of and we know of, particularly along the existing stream-side, protected stream-side areas, floodplain areas, and areas that we have trail corridors planned. The proposal currently is to, before you, is to rezone the property into four zoning districts, the majority of which, about 70%, would be Neighborhood Conservation, which is a single-family zoning district, allowing small lots but also allows large lots depending upon market conditions. Community Services, which is a mixed-use form-based zoning district concentrated primarily along the corridor of Rupel Road. Residential Agricultural, we chose that designation along the Riparian corridors, again because we knew those were sensitive areas, we knew where the designation of floodplain was located and stream-side protection areas, so we were confident those areas should be at least protected with a lower, very low density or no development. And then Urban Thoroughfare, which we concentrated around some of the major intersection areas. There's a map, I believe on page 95, that shows this corridor in your packet and also, let me put it up on the screen here. As we do, staff-initiated rezoning requests, we sent letters to all property owners asking for input for several weeks. We took this to the planning commission on two different occasions, on April 13th and again on April 27th, to solicit feedback upon the proposal before bringing it to the city council. At both the April 13th and April 27th meeting and also in one-on-one conversations with staff, we did have several members of the public and property owners express concerns and questions. A lot of the concerns related to potential for natural resources on the subject property and as a result of the planning commission meeting and discussion, an exhibit was provided by the public to the planning commission, generally indicating the area of the property they felt had the highest potential for quality habitat. I will mention, I don't think there's been any in-depth formal study of this property whatsoever to solidify what areas might be, might or might not be high-quality habitat. Staff stab at that, was essentially looking at our stream-side protection area, floodplains, those known defined areas that we have, that we, those are the areas that we are recommending RA Residential Agricultural. There's an exhibit attached on page 93 and 94 of your staff report showing the citizens' information that they were presenting to you all. We also made some additional changes between the two planning commission meetings. We provided an additional buffer of Neighborhood Conservation zoning between the Walnut Crossing and Magnolia Crossing neighborhoods and also the proposed Urban Thoroughfare zoning designation, which is to the south, very south of the project proposal. We did that to provide simply a better transition and buffer between those two existing neighborhoods. The planning commission on April 27th voted to for this item, seven to zero, in favor of the staff's proposed rezoning. There were some special considerations that they would like for you all to consider, primarily for the environmentally sensitive areas discussed at the planning commission meetings and the possibility of either a future land use plan amendment to recognize sensitive habitat areas and/or a policy discussion to accept parkland dedication instead of money for preservation of the sensitive wet prairie habitat as this property develops. One commissioner recommended the council also consider adopting an ordinance for conservation subdivision development patterns in this area. Some of those options, as we discussed a little bit at the agenda session, include, ones that we have at our disposal now, obviously, are parkland, tree preservation areas, stream-side protection, and floodplains. Those are the things we currently have on the books as tools essentially to protect lands during the development process. Other items that have been discussed for conservation or cluster-type development, which we don't really have specific regulations around except within our PVD ordinance, a planned zoning district can, refers specifically to cluster developments and conservation of land, particularly when something is looking to be density-neutral or concentrate density in one area while preserving another. Two members of the public spoke at that April 27th meeting and I believe all that information has been submitted in your packet as well. Staff does recommend leaving this on the first reading tonight. This is a major rezoning, 642 acres in west Fayetteville, and so we certainly do not want to rush this by any means and we want to have plenty of time for public consumption of this information. In addition, we are planning to go to the Environmental Action Committee, I believe it's in June if I'm not mistaken, for discussion there as well, primarily because this entire side of, this entire portion of west Fayetteville falls within our Enduring Green Network and so recognizing that as an opportunity for discussing this project and proposal is certainly, certainly valid.
Okay. Does the applicant want to speak before the council tonight? I mean, though, I know some of the folks, it's, okay.
Make public comment then?
Yeah, okay. Charlie?
Hello, Mayor.
Hi.
Council. I'm Charlie Sloan. I own, I'm one of the property owners out there, there's about five of us. I own the property that is where Al Creek runs through my property, northern end of this rezoning, the park that says, I think it's Agricultural or R1, that they proposed along the creek. I've owned the property for about 10 years. We have been working with Mayor back when he was a councilman about Rupel Road, which we're encouraged that it's going through finally. We have also worked with Parks Department, Trail System, and everything else to work with, putting, using that land along Al Creek for that purpose of a trail and for a purpose of a park. So we do have plans to keep part of that green and when we do eventually sell, develop, or whatever happens out there. One of the controversies that came up in the planning commission that sort of caught us off guard, we've used the field, we've allowed people to go in there and cut our hay for years. That's all I've ever done with it. Previous owners, it was a farm. They did farm it for years and then eventually they got to where they didn't want to do that anymore, so they turned it into just hay fields. So we have done nothing but cut hay on there. I know my neighbors that I've talked to before used to have active farms around us also. One of the things that came up was about, that we had heard about was preserving a green space on the, thank you guys having your packet, it's not up on the screen, but it catches a significant part of my property to the south between myself and Mrs. Jordan. I believe you all have it shown as a proposed area there. Once again, it was a quick study from what I say, study that we understood, some students presented, that we did have someone go back out there because this is twice that I've had someone go out there and just look at our property and make sure we didn't have any wetlands or anything like that. We just had done that several months ago. So I asked them to go back after this drawing was presented to us and re-study that area on our property. I don't have, I didn't get on anybody else's property. But, and once again, we sent an email to Jeremy Friday, I don't know if you guys got it in your packet or not, that showed that they did not see anything significant out there. Now, along the southern property, my southern property, which is probably halfway down that yellow spot there, there is a ditch that has been dug by the original owners, our previous owners, that they've had there for years. It's probably two foot wide, maybe a foot deep. If you go out there after all this rain, it is holding water. It, what they were trying to do, it runs along my southern fence line, to grab the water that's coming off that mountain toward us to keep it from going all the way across the field. So there is water there. It comes out, actually comes out, you can see a corner of it down, when you go down by Groyles, it's wet and it dries up in the summertime. It's just strictly to stop water from coming across the field so we can get tractors and stuff in the field. It is fairly flat out there and like I said, it stays wet when it rains. Al Creek, you know, I love going out there and watching the beaver build his dam and everything else that they've had out there and different critters out there, but it dries up completely in the summertime. It's a hard rock surface and, look, my whole concern on this, you know, was the fact that, you know, we have areas that we hope to see a park go into, a neighborhood park go into, Trail System go into. I had worked with Matt years ago, it's actually on the Trail System and we've hoped to have been here years ago, but with the economy collapsing, we didn't get to finish developing. So that's what we hope, that that will be the green space, reserve space for the public and for trails and leave the creek alone, that area. And probably not as much of a controversy now, but it's, you know, when we're worrying about the whole area being rezoned, you know, the city has spent, I called Paul Becker and asked him to give me a list of some items that we have spent a lot of money on, the city has, on getting this side ready. $61 million for a west side treatment plant so we could develop in this area or other people could. Groyles Road upgrade was $4.5 million. Sewer lines, they came back through and did additional sewer line work even behind my house, but you've got $33.5 million on that side and I'll just try to concentrate on that side of town, that area generally. And, you know, and then what you're spending on Rupel Road to open this area up, a road that's rarely, it's needed and a lot of people that, just hearing people comment, they're excited about having this happen, not people even know that I have property over there, but there's just local people that I've talked to that are just excited about that eventually opening up and getting them down to Martin Luther King area and shopping area and stuff like that. So right now, that's, I have a handout that we sent to Jeremy, I don't know, it was too late, you're probably getting yours packet. If we're allowed to leave it, I'll be glad to leave it.
It'll be fine.
You can put it in the next packet. Oh, yep. Once again, we just, we hired a company, FTN, that does the, did the water studies for you guys. They, I think they helped write the drainage report for this town and everything else. So it was somebody that we deal with and we just asked them, once again, they had been out there before. A year or so ago, we asked them to go back and be very specific to the area that was in the, that we saw on the slide before and to let us know if there's something out there. I've, like I said, I've been out there 10 years, short of a few black snakes coming up to the house and a few bullfrogs, that's, you know, that's all that comes up forward us. And I do know we have the woosly wetlands across the street, so if there is something there, I don't imagine there's anything to stop it from coming over to our side. There's a bridge that's got five or six large openings underneath that bridge for water flow that anything comes across or back and forth from my plan to theirs, but like I said, we were not, we're not classified any kind of wetland or anything like that and we don't have a, as far as we know, we understand that this particular frog that they were talking about was, was one of the couple items they talked about was not on any endangered species list or anything like that. We just ask you to keep that in consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to hear from any of the property owners that might be in the area and then I want to turn it over to the council, ask questions, property owners, our staff. Any of the property owners want to address the council?
My name is Aaron Worth, Cobson Homes. We have the property in the northeast corner under contract there and we've set out, we've worked all the houses just to the north-
Any of the property owners want to address the council?
My name is Aaron Worth, Cobson Homes. We have the property in the northeast corner under contract there, and we've set up, we've worked all the houses just north of this and watched that property for a long time, and we are in support of the zoning, and, you know, go through, looking forward to working out there.
Okay. Any other property owners? Okay. Counsel, what question, do we have any question, any property owners or Jeremy on this, on the rezonings? Nope? Okay. Now I'm going to open it up to the public, and everybody gets, one turn to the microphone, please give us your name and address. Don't engage council member, anybody in the audience, all right? Keep the remarks to me. And again, please do not do any hand clapping, booing, laughing, or yelling at folks. So, who would like to be first?
My name's Chelsea Frost, and I live at 2148 East Fraser Terrace, Fayetteville 72703. And so I just wanted, I'm the citizen who made that map, and what I wanted to talk about is that although plowing, cutting of the grass did occur, if you do zoom in in the image, you can see prairie mounds, and that's indicative of the historical geology, and that is what Woolsey Wet Prairie was before restoration. And obviously, the wildlife, they don't really have boundaries, and it was able to bounce back at Woolsey Wet Prairie regardless of whether or not grasses were cut and whatnot, because casky is still cut at Woolsey Wet Prairie, and there's still plenty of animals and wildlife out there. Second, I wanted to mention the importance of seasonally inundated wetlands, so they dry up in the summer. They're very productive for wildlife, specifically for amphibians and other invertebrates. And I want to talk about each, early winter, in early spring, or late winter, early spring, crawfish frogs are calling, and you can perform auditory surveys, you don't have to get close to the wetlands, like we performed surveys in Woolsey Wet Prairie and along Broyles Road. And that section that we highlighted in that other map, we do hear a full breeding chorus using the North American Amphibian Mind Chain Program protocol, that's a three. And then these frogs are there for a couple of weeks, they leave, they go out to crayfish burrows, and they live there for the rest of the year, until they come back to breed. So these are, I mean, it's definitely possible that they are there, it's just we don't hear them calling because they're gone for the year, and we heard them calling this past February and March. Anyway, I just wanted to recommend that this is tabled till after the Environmental Action Committee.
We're going to leave it on the first reading.
Okay, okay, awesome. I don't know, I don't know how all this works, so. Anyway, that's all I want to say, that this is an important area. I know you got the letters from the Audubon Society, and hopefully we can work together to at least have some kind of conservation of rural wildlife. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to address us on this? Okay. I'm bringing back to the council, I assume we're going to leave it on the first reading, is any other, everybody good? All right. Let's go on to number four. An order to rezoning that property described in zoning position RZN 15-5004 for approximately 17.37 acres located south of Pumpkin Ridge Road from RA Residential Agriculture to RSF2 Residential Single Family, two units per acre. Kit?
Be ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section One, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby changes the zone classification of the following prescribed property from residential agricultural to residential single family, two units per acre, as shown in Exes A and B attached here to and made a part hereof. And Section Two, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amends the official zoning map of the City of Fayetteville to reflect the zoning change provided in Section One.
Chair?
This is an appeal of a Planning Commission recommendation on a rezoning action. The property is located south of Stonebridge Meadows subdivision and Golf Course, approximately 400 feet south of Pumpkin Ridge Drive. With the exception of some previous clearing, the site is heavily wooded, with much of the property located within the hillside, hilltop, overlay district. The property was previously zoned for a residential planned zoning district called Fallen Waters. The project was approved in 2005 for development of 258 residential lots with the density of around, density of around two units per acre over the 100, the full 137 acres. The project included a number of infrastructure improvements, including a new water tower, street and bridge assessments, a six acre public park, water and sewer extensions, all of that to support the number of lots that were presented at the time. That project was never developed, and the development rights and zoning expired. City staff brought forward several rezoning requests in 2011 to address many of the expired PZD developments that did not occur, including this one, the Fallen Waters project. Based upon the lack of infrastructure and services to support residential development in 2011, staff recommended the Planning Commission and City Council approve rezoning the property back to RA Residential Agricultural. This property is located, as I mentioned, at the edge of the city, with the exception of Stonebridge Meadows neighborhood about 400 feet to the north. It's surrounded by large agricultural and forested properties. The request is to rezone the property from residential agricultural to RSF2, which is a single family residential designation, up to two units per acre. Staff originally debated whether we should support this zoning or not, due primarily to the previous PZD that was around two units per acre, and also the fact that the City Council supported that policy change. Ultimately, our recommendation against the rezoning came down to a couple of factors. One, there was a change in city policy from City Plan 2025, which showed this as a residential neighborhood area that should be developed with residential uses, and City Plan 2030, which showed that that would be incompatible with this particular area and the guidance related to that future land use plan. Also, the second primary factor was simply a lack of infrastructure, water, sewer, fire and police response time to serve residential development in this area. The City Plan 2030, which actually happened to be adopted on the same meeting that this was rezoned in 2011, designates this site now as a rural residential area. Those are classified in order to preserve woodlands, agricultural lands, and to reduce the infrastructure burden on the public to the extent possible. As I mentioned, much of this area had been previously designated as a residential area, which encourages urban and suburban development, but the City Council adopted that rural designation for the area in 2011 with the City Plan 2030. Rural residential areas recognize existing low-density, large-lot residential development, but they're really identified to encourage conservation and preservation of woodlands, grasslands, agricultural lands that are sparsely settled. They may or may not have adequate street, water infrastructure, or public services such as police and fire readily available to support those densities and development patterns, nor should these services be expanded to a great extent to accommodate further growth unless they're in line with several guiding principles. Some of those are to allow and encourage historical agricultural and related uses to continue, to encourage alternative development patterns such as conservation or cluster development types, which you've already discussed tonight, to achieve compatibility with surrounding rural areas. The staff's recommendation in this particular case went back to City Plan 2030 for a recommendation, and also looked at the infrastructure. Fire and police response times are higher in this area due to its location and the proximity of those resources. Water and sewer would have to be extended from off-site to get to this property, from Stonebridge Meadows most likely, about 400 feet to the north, as well as streets. And currently, there's only one access point, presumably based on the site plan that was submitted, that would be to Pumpkin Ridge Drive. Typically, there's a maximum of about 30 single-family dwellings until a second access point can be provided, or if our marshal determines a future connection, will suffice. And that was an answer to a question an alderman had about that particular issue. At the April 13th, 2015, Planning Commission meeting, Planning Commission denied this rezoning on a vote of eight to one. At the meeting, there were five members of the public that spoke, that live in Stonebridge Meadows subdivision, opposed to the rezoning, citing several concerns, some of which we staff did not have a concern with, and we don't believe traffic is a major issue with this size, 17 acres of rezoning. Drainage is a concern in this area, but that would need to be addressed with our, would have to be addressed regardless of what density this was zoned. Environmental damage and degradation of their property values was also cited as concerns by the public. All in all, staff is recommending against the rezoning, again, going back to our city plan and infrastructure concerns.
Would the owner like to say something for the council?
Mr. Mayor, esteemed council, it's always good to be back in these halls. My name is Robert Rhodes, I'm a lawyer with the law firm of Hall Estle, and I am representing the owners, and they are sitting back with me. That would be Clay Carlton and Mike Lambrough, and they've owned this property for that entire chronological set of sequences that Mr. Payton was kind enough to walk you through. That's, what, I guess 10 years. The, I'll try not to repeat what Jeremy's gone through, but if I may, I'll just try to hit a few points. The PZD that was approved in 2005 was unanimous, it was 7-0, actually, the only person that didn't vote for it was absent, and that was one of the three mess, meal, or meals, one of the three meetings that I missed, so I didn't actually vote on that. That was for 137 acres and, I think, 254, 58 lots, and there was no water, there was no sewer there, and when the PZD was approved, and I'm going to call my clients the Buffington Homes, they weren't called that back then, but it's the same owners, but they're now called Buffington Homes. But back then, after they, after they got the approval, they partnered up with two or three other people and put in a total of $2.5 million to bring water and sewer underneath the river and about 6,300 feet of line to get it to their site. Their share of that was $850,000. And despite the fact that there was a down, I mean, well, because there was a downturn in the economy, and they couldn't financially continue, continue on with their, with the project, that work that they did, along with their partners, but what they, you know, made a substantial investment in, is now being, you know, currently being enjoyed by a lot of folks in that part of town. I'd also add that because of the downturn, that I think if we'll, if we'll remember, there were a good number of PZDs and a good number of projects back in that time, that because of the economy, didn't go forward. And you can look around town, and you can see that some of those projects were left in a state of disrepair. Fortunately, the Buffington Home folks were sharp enough to realize that the economy true was going down, and they determined that they would rather have to try to struggle and pay the carrying costs on a piece of property versus a piece of property and a bunch of infrastructure, that in the course of 10 years, they would have had to pay more carrying costs, but also, it would have probably decayed like some of the other developers that we've seen around town, that didn't, either didn't have the wisdom, or maybe they got too far ahead or whatever. But the piece of property, the 137 acres, is not an eyesore. It is, it is a, you know, it's a very good-looking piece of property on the hillside. So, as we've talked before, they could not build, their PZD expired, and as I mentioned before, they, they paid for their property, they paid the interest on their property to the tune of about a million and a half dollars over this last 10 years. So if you add that to the 850 they've already put in it, they've got a pretty sizable investment in this piece of property. I know you've all probably seen the letter that one of the owners has written you, and I think one of the things he puts in that letter is, well, you know what, that's, we don't expect you to feel sorry for us, because, you know, times got tough, and we had, you know, this project didn't turn out, and we've, you know, had to spend a lot of money on it. But I still believe, you know, it's not my money, they've hired me to represent them, I still think that is something that we should all be looking at and be considering, is that when, you know, developers in our city go to the effort, the financial effort, as well as the time, and try to build something, that this City Council and the Planning Commission at the time salutes and indicates that this is a fine project, and we, I think it behooves us as, or behooves y'all as city leaders, to kind of consider, okay, well, what, what's the right thing to do? What's the right thing to do, even though 10 years has transpired? So, kind of fast forwarding, in 2011, as Jeremy has indicated, it's been rezoned to residential agriculture as part of a citywide effort, again, I believe it was a citywide effort to shore up some of these PZDs that had expired. I guess one of the questions that I would probably ask is why, in 2011, why didn't these developers do something then? Why did they let it just get reassigned back to RA? The answer is, they, at that time, they still were not financially able to do anything, and, and it just wasn't feasible for them to do anything, and so they did nothing. Now, fast forward to 2015, where we are standing here today. What they're proposing is pretty much exactly what that PZD was, except it's not 137 acres, it's 17 acres. And they're asking again for two acres, or I'm sorry, two lots per acre, and only, and I think the, and I think this has been submitted, and this probably should be in your packet, they're not asking for 34 homes, they're asking for 30, which I think is a requirement, so it's 30, it's 30 homes. And the reason is that, the reason that they are asking for that, and asking for y'all to overturn what the Planning Commission has decided, is because they cannot financially make RA work. And to some degree, RA in that particular site makes their property somewhat undevelopable. On the other hand, two lots, or I'm sorry, yeah, two lots per acre will allow them, and then perhaps at some point, with the rest of the 120 acres, if indeed they can make this work, and they're willing to invest their time and their money to see if they can, if they can get the 17 acres developed and built and sold, then if indeed that works, then that allows them to have, you know, greater ability to develop the additional 120 acres. And I guess probably, if I were you, I'd be asking myself, okay, why should we grant this appeal? Again, as I mentioned before, it's pretty much the same PZD, except it's less acreage. And I understand that from what Jeremy has mentioned, and my viewing of the tape of the Planning Commission, I listened very carefully to the concerns that were brought up by members of the public. And I would have to agree with the Planning Department that I do not believe there's going to be any traffic problems. There's a new light, I believe it's at 16 and Dead Horse Mountain, that's now going to 4 Lane. So I do not believe that there's, that's going to be a traffic issue going forward. As far as construction traffic that may happen during the construction, there would be construction traffic if they were to develop it as RA, or if they develop it here, and I think anytime, anytime you develop anything, there's going to be construction traffic. But that's, that's a temporary situation, and I'm certain that as, as good developers, they'll do their best to be as compassionate and careful with their construction procedures and practices to make it as least problematic to the neighbors. Also, talked about drainage, and I appreciate the fact that planning has Also, talked about drainage, and I appreciate the fact that planning has mentioned that, you know, if indeed this is approved, that it has to be engineered and it has to be approved by the city, so that drainage will not be a problem. This site, though, has something that even, that should give you even greater assurance that it won't be a problem. And that is that the developers have an agreement with the largest landowner, and that would be the golf course, the owner of the golf course, Stonebridge Meadows, that it's sort of, it's sort of a win-win arrangement. Their agreement is that their water will drain into the golf course, where the golf course wants that water anyways, into those retention ponds, which is what the course uses to water their greens and their fairways. And then the rest of the water is meant to drain off across, I think it's Golf Road, into a small lake there. And so, you know, I think that, I think you can rest assured that drainage is not going to be a problem. And I guess I'd go further to say that, that I think with the hillside ordinance, this development and these owners, they plan on not only adhering to the hillside ordinance, whether it speaks of the drainage aspect or the number of trees that you are to retain. And I think the more trees you retain, that has an impact on drainage. And they indicate that their proposed restrictive governance will be even stricter as far as tree preservation. And I think it's their belief that trees sells homes. And so, they want this area to be maintained its wooded look. Mike Lambeth lives in the historic district where he's living for, he hasn't lived for a long time. Clay Carlton, he lives in Mount Sequoia. And I think their vision of all this, of this property, of the entire PZD, and now just this 17 acres, but hopefully eventually all of it, is that it would mimic Mount Sequoia. It would be as livable and as, and as, hopefully, you know, full of trees and not have drainage issues, just like Mount Sequoia. You know, if I could, if I could just kind of stop right here. Not only do I represent these two gentlemen, but they're also very, very good friends of mine. And I've known them for a good number of years. And, you know, I think, you know, I'm speaking about a lot of things that they plan on doing. And so you kind of have to listen to me and say, okay, well, that's good, he's saying that. I certainly hope, you know, that he's not just being paid to say that. Well, I'm not, I mean, it's not that. I have known them to be, you know, true to their word. I've known them to be civic-minded. I've known them to do, I think, very good work, whether it's in this county or whether it's in the county north. City needs infill, wants infill. They've done, they're doing the cottages on Old Wire. I think that's an excellent project. They did the project on Zion, what is it, Lakewood, I believe? I think that's what it's called. And, you know, these are guys that have rode out the storm, are trying to continue to build and put a good product. And I think when they tell you that they're going to do something, they're going to take care of the drainage, they're going to make sure, you know, that as they build, they're good neighbors, they mean it, they mean it. Going further, I'd ask you... While y'all are getting those, and I'm going to refer to them in a second. And I believe this is something that's in your packet. And it's the 2030 city plan. And I think staff has copied one page of it that talks about the rural residential areas. And again, this is, you know, staff's recommendation is that this is what we ought to leave this at as a, you know, as a rural agricultural designation. And I guess I would ask you to just to think about a few things. Number one, it's, by its own definition, it is guiding principles. It's general guidance, okay? It's not the Holy Grail, it's not written in stone. And so, it's meant to be just as guidance. I'd also ask you to, if you would, I mean, in your packet, it talks about what the guiding policies are. And initially, I think in, this was designated as this rural residential areas. And it talks about, the guiding policies are, number one, to allow and encourage historical agricultural uses to continue. This site was never a agricultural. I mean, maybe at some point, you know, somebody had a beef cow or something, but it was never, it was never historically agricultural. It also indicates that is the guiding principles, to foster a culture that supports local food production on a variety of scales. I don't know if you could really foster that on this particular site. It also indicates that it's to encourage and preserve and protect viable agri businesses, such as orchards, berry farms, so on and so forth. Again, that's, I don't think that site fits those guiding policies. But then if you look at B, and this is why I've handed out that handout to you, it indicates, if developed, to encourage alternative developments to achieve compatibility with surrounding rural areas. If you look at the surround, as you can see, the proposed 17 acres is in black. Aside from the golf course, I mean, look what you see around. You see everything, all of these subdivisions are at least twice the density that is being asked for by the Buffington Home folks. And so I would say that, you know, that I think you could, you could make a good argument that the surrounding area, what's compatible, will certainly be two lots per acre. I think one of the other comments that I recall that was made at the planning commission by the public was that there would be a decrease in value. And for the life of me, I don't understand that, to be real honest. I think if, that these lots, and I believe it was made by somebody that lives in one of the subdivisions, that lives in Stonebridge Meadows Estates. And if the lots that are being proposed by this, by the Buffington Home folks are twice as large, and if you presume that the homes are going to be at least the size of whatever is in those other subdivisions, then you would think that instead of decreasing the value of their land, it would actually increase it. Another comment that was brought up is in regard to environmental. And I think the lady that brought up the comment, you know, felt that this was an area that was, you know, was beautiful, and I presume she liked to walk the mountain and things of that nature. And the, again, the development will, I mean, it will still be a walkable neighborhood, you would presume if somebody wants to, you know, walk through hills. I would also ask you, you know, if you, if you think about that comment about people wanting to keep it environmental, and if you look at the, if you look at the staff's report, and it talks about, well, you're encouraged to, or at least they're encouraging the developer to keep this RA where it is one per two acre, and the city would encourage the use of septic tanks. And I mean, that's, I mean, that's what it says in the report. And I realize that septic tanks are used occasionally. But I always felt that most folks in the city of Fayetteville and in leadership position really would rather we not use septic tanks. And so, you know, I guess if you, if you're concerned, if a citizen comes and says, you know, we're neighbors and we're concerned about the environment, but yet if it stays RA and there's, and you're encouraging developers to use septic tanks, I think you're kind of saying two different things there. And it's, one seems crossways to the other. Also, as I was looking through the memo that the planning department handed out when y'all made your decision to make this, to make this, take it from a PZD and turn it into the RA, the memo talks about, about in the 2025 plan, not the 2030, but the 2025 plan, that this site should be designated as residential neighborhood. And it talks about that, that that type of area should be accessible to roadways. And again, put yourself back in 2011, what that area was like in 2011. Community amenities, schools, infrastructure, retail, commercial. Due to a lack of adequate public infrastructure and retail goods and services, we represent that a low density of residential agriculture be used here. But then the report goes on to say, at some point in the future, when there is adequate infrastructure and services in this area, this property may be suitable for more dense zoning and residential development, but not at this time. I'd say that this time is now, now. I mean, it's four years has gone by, and I believe that there's a whole lot better traffic flow. There are more amenities out there, there is commercial, there is retail. And by staff's, you know, by own comments, I think that could justify, I think, a vote in favor of this project. Well, I would, I suspect that this probably will not go on three readings tonight, although we love that. And so what I would invite the city council to do is take a tour. Come out there and look, okay? That's all I have, unless there's questions for me.
Is there any questions from Robert on this? Yes, I'm sorry.
I have a question. The development, you know, I'm kind of looking at it on Google Maps, and it appears it's the only exit that's planned going to exit down Cherry Hills and Pumpkin Ridge Drive? Or is there another exit?
For the 17 acre first stage, yes, that's the...
Okay, because I know you mentioned Mount Sequoia, and as a former resident of Rogers Drive, when that road collapsed, I know that was a big issue as far as public safety and getting in and out of that neighborhood. And so that gives me a lot of concerns about any type of residential area with one point of egress or egress.
Any other questions? Okay. Is there anybody else from the public who would like to address this tonight?
My name is Jay Ray, I live at 2050 South Cherry Hills Drive. And I'd like to say one area doesn't look, another area anywhere in Fayetteville. There is a big concern for drainage. The houses on the end for the egress going up, the new roads have to sandbag their backyard as of now. The road was under, Stonebridge goes for 200 feet, then it turns into Dead Horse Mountain. It was underwater by two foot three times in the last 10 days, and the city had to close the road. That leaves only two ways out, Roberts. And it leaves the main road coming in where there's a pillar that says, "Welcome to Stonebridge." And you can't get two trucks passed because the retaining wall's on the side. So that's not a really good place to come in. And there's no light but at Stonebridge, that's the only light there. And when it's underwater, you can't leave. I went to work and I was, I went across, I had a very large truck last week, and the yellow line disappeared completely. There's no sidewalk, there are four and five-foot drop-offs on both sides of the road. Somebody leaves the hydro plane and be in the ditch, and that's White River. When it rises, it rises always to the golf course. Traffic and water is my main concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Tom Stevens, 3803 East River, Blue Cove, Stonebridge. I didn't bring any prepared comments. The only consideration that I think, and I don't understand, is why the only entrance to this subdivision has to be through Stonebridge. I've seen the property, I've seen the property outline, and it appears the owner has property frontage on Dead Horse Mountain. And again, why can't he just make his entrance off of Dead Horse Mountain and not through Stonebridge? It was mentioned that construction traffic will be just temporary. Well, if you don't live there, temporary is temporary. But we live there, and houses being built are not going to be built overnight. It's going to be years. I also noticed that on the plan, there's a stub of a road going south off of the new development. Are there more houses planned in the future, more traffic, more construction that will go on for even more years? Those are questions I have. My main question is, why through Stonebridge? Why not off Dead Horse Mountain? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you for hearing us.
You might want to pull that mic.
Yes.
There we go.
My name is Wanda Altman, I live on Cherry Hills Drive. I am concerned about the environmental impact of this proposal. I am that lady. I would like to talk about taking a beautiful, pristine, undeveloped mountainside and turning it into basically another housing project. As Mr. Payton has, or our representative from the planning commission has stated, this proposal flies in the face of city plan 2030, which calls for the preservation, the conservation of just the kinds of woodland, grassland that this mountain represents. The 2030 plan also calls for infilling, finding spaces within the city rather than sprawling out from the edges. And again, this proposal deals with an area that is on the edge of the city limits and would be just that kind of urban sprawl. Now, I know it's been said that for the sake of growth and expansion, which is an important thing, I understand, that we can no longer infill, we've used all that space up. But I respectfully disagree with that. Just over the past couple of years, there's been numerous projects approved, Woodbury off of Zion, Summit Place off of Township, Cobblestone, Whistler Woods off of Mission, that would meet the requirements within the Fayetteville City Plan 2030 and not lead to this ugly urban sprawl that the plan has spoken against. Also, there are those who say that Fayetteville has been seen to be unfriendly to developers. And again, looking at the track record over the past several years of housing developments that have been approved, I would think that developers would think we were very friendly indeed to them. I know that this project goes back prior to the 2011 unanimous approval by the city council of the Fayetteville City Plan 2030. council of the Fayetteville City Plan 2030. I understand that money has been spent, I understand that promises have been made, but let's be fair, those promises were also allowed to expire. And since then, in the form of this shared vision and shared goals of the 2030 plan, promises have been made to the city residents of Fayetteville in the form of shared vision and shared goals for what our city should be. I would like to ask, what has happened in that four short years from July 2011 and the unanimous approval of the plan and today, in 2015, that would justify the abandonment and in fact, the complete reversal in this particular instance of the principles and guidelines laid down in this long-term planning for our city? So, as I have said, a lot of money, a lot of time, a lot of effort went into this city plan. The public was called in, they were consulted. It was a joint project of everybody working together, and as I've said, coming up with a shared vision, shared goals for our city. The very things that make Fayetteville a unique place to live, like its natural beauty, its green spaces, its mountainsides and trees, that's what's at stake here, and that's what should be protected by the 2030 plan. So, promises have been made to the city of Fayetteville residents as well, and I would ask that the council uphold those promises and vote against this rezoning. I would also like to address just one point. I think there was a misreading of some of the items from the 2030 plan. What it actually says when it talks about historical agriculture and related uses, encourage alternative development patterns, a culture that promotes local food production, it wasn't saying that that's what it should be already. It says, if you'll look at the plan, I'm sure that Jeremy must have it here somewhere, but it says that services like fire and street and water should not be expanded to accommodate further growth in these rural residential areas unless the following principles are met, and that's when it talks about those historical agriculture and fostering a culture that supports local food production. So I think that puts a very different spin on what the plan actually says, and what we are seeing proposed with its housing development does not meet any of these requirements that it talks about, which are the, the only time that these services provided by the city should be expanded for growth in these rural agricultural areas. So once again, I would like you to remember your promises to the city residents of Fayetteville and stand by your commitment to keeping Fayetteville a beautiful, unique place to live, full of natural beauty, and vote against this proposal to rezone. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh-uh, no hand clapping here.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Larry Altman. I live at Cherry Hills Drive, and I'm afraid my wife has stole a lot of my thunder that I wanted to talk about tonight, but I do want to reiterate some of the points that I made in my earlier email that I sent out this morning to all the council members and to you, sir. The city of Fayetteville does not need another 35 homes or houses on a, built on a pristine mountainside. We already have plenty of examples of that. If you look at Township and College, if you look at Crossover, Stone Mountain, and Island Park, and some of those examples I'm talking about, and also Summit Place, I believe it's called, upon College and Township, we already have a lot of those examples of places where the mountainside has been stripped and homes have been built. This really represents suburban sprawl in its worst form. It's basically expanding out from the edges of the city into a rural area, pristine mountainside. And we do already have serious drainage problems in Stone Bridge Meadows. I think all of the citizens or all of the residents of Stone Bridge Meadows can attest to that. Every time it rains, we have drainage problems. The golf course, I, I'm an avid golfer, I golf there quite frequently. Golf course does not need more water from this mountainside. Every time it rains, the golf course floods, and we're on cart path only, which means you have to stay on the cart path because the ground is so wet. The drainage from this suburban sprawl is going to be significant, be a significant increase to the drainage problems out there. It doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure that out. The thing that really, I think, irritates me about this also is the fact that we know, we, all of us know that the 30 to 35 homes that are being proposed here are not going to be the end of it. By their own admission, tonight, they're going to come back to the city council hat in hand asking for more, 35 or 40, 50 more homes after they finish this particular development. So again, I would ask that the city council, I know that I've heard some comments that, well, you know, we, there were some promises that were made to these developers, and I understand that promises were made in 2005, but something significant happened since then, and that was Fayetteville City Plan 2030. And this flies in the face of that plan, and I think the promises were made to the residents of Fayetteville in 2011 that are more significant and more important than promises that were made in 2005, which, by the way, were turned down by the developers. And then the city council decided to rezone it back to RA, residential agriculture. What was the reason for that? What was the reason the city council decided to rezone it back to RA? Because it fell in line with the Fayetteville City Plan 2030, I think. So, there are so many, I guess the, the final point I want to make is that there is one entrance, egress and entrance to this proposed development, and that is Cherry Hills Drive. The city does not need more traffic coming down Highway 16, turning on Stone Bridge Meadows, going up Dead Horse Mountain, turning down Golf Farm Road, turning on Cherry Hills Drive for 35 more houses on a mountainside. The city doesn't need to be sending fire trucks up to another mountainside in remote edges of Fayetteville. The city does not need to be sending its, the city does not need to be sending its sanitation workers up to a mountainside to remove the garbage and recycling bins on another remote mountainside development. So I would urge city council members to stick by the plan that they all unanimously voted on in July 2011 and say no to this rezoning proposal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes?
I had a question. You, you brought up a good point, is why was it, why was it rezoned back to RA in 2011? I had Sandra actually pulled the minutes from the 2011 city council meeting. Excuse me, I had Sandra pull the minutes from the 2011 city council meeting, and Jeremy, you could correct me if I'm wrong, but in the minutes when we were talking, not when we were talking, but when the council was talking about why to rezone it back to RA, it just said in the minutes that you felt it would be most appropriate just to go back to the previous zoning. So was there really a discussion of what was most appropriate for that property, or was it just, "We're dealing with an expired PZD, let's just put it back to the previous zoning"?
The minutes really don't reflect a lot of discussion, honestly. The staff report gives, lays out the recommendation, so I think we brought four or five of those through that same meeting night. And looking at the staff report, it, it makes the case for the infrastructure issues that we, that we had discussed, and the fact that we were actually, at the very same night, also the council had approved City Plan 2030, and we knew that designation was changing between the City Plan 2025 and 2030. So that's, I think that's all discussed in the staff report, but you're right, it was not really discussed in great length at all at the council meeting.
So it was more just going back to the previous zoning at the same time?
Yes, it did go back to the, the previous zoning.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening. My name's Richard Hevy. I live at 1262 South River Meadows Drive, and I'm here to support comments Altman's and my other neighbors. I'd originally intended to speak primarily about the traffic pattern in the area. Right now, on River Meadows Drive, River Meadows, the design is a residential street, and it's turning into a public thoroughfare. Very soon, if this development goes forward, Pumpkin Ridge will be subject to the same fate. In our area, we're very grateful for the improvements that are being made to Highway 16 and the traffic light interchange is a great benefit for us. Our neighborhood is afflicted with a serious choke point on Golf Farm Road at the northeast corner of the golf course, where the water drains through a culvert and goes into the small lake. That culvert bridge is not wide enough safely for two vehicles at the same time, and additional traffic coming down Pumpkin Ridge will make the situation worse. The other thing, may we see the map again? You'll notice that there is an alternative outlet approximated by the orange line in the southeast corner that goes directly out to, goes out to Dead Horse Mountain Road. It's an undeveloped but early right-of-way affair. The developers of Falling Waters also saw fit to clear trees and other obstacles in two locations along the edge of Dead Horse Mountain. Those could easily be developed into another entrance or egress from that development, giving fire and emergency vehicles an alternative. I don't think that extending Pumpkin Ridge is the best way to satisfy that need. But above and beyond that, those of us that are familiar with the area, and I've spent a good time, a good deal of time walking those hills, there are physical and natural resources up there. There's a four-foot limestone cap rock layer at about the 1,200-foot point. It is spectacular, and once that's been developed, and once it's gone, you'll never put it back again. There are several interesting features out there that at some point in time might become a public park or another resource. So in addition to the pragmatic problems of traffic, emergency services, overextending Fayetteville's infrastructure, there is a irrecoverable natural resource, at the moment untouched, and it's our obligation to leave it untouched for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to address us?
Hello, my name's Gregory Carter. I also live in Stone Bridge Meadows. I live on Cherry Hills Drive, and one of the concerns that I have with this proposal is the idea of, they, they say Pumpkin Ridge. Pumpkin Ridge ties into this new proposed subdivision, but in reality, they will come out of that subdivision and go down Cherry Hills Drive. I'm the one that talked about the property depreciation, because I believe if you have 30 or 40 more cars coming down Cherry Hills Drive, it's going to make us, rather than a residential, they're going, it's going to make us a main thoroughfare. When this was originally proposed in, in, I guess it was in 2005, it was going to go through Pumpkin Ridge all the way to Dead Horse Mountain. They talk about the $2.5 million that was spent to bring in the resources. To me, I don't know where they brought them in for. I did see where they cut roads, but I don't understand why they're going to make this come out of our subdivision instead of taking it out of Dead Horse Mountain, because it, to me, it's going to just, just be a major catastrophe for our neighborhood. I also would not understand why the board would go against the Planning Commission's decisions to, to do this type of a subdivision, and I also go along, I believe it was Mr., was it Rhodes, with the option, if, if you all would, we'd love to have you come out and look at it too, and get together with our, our property owners and see what we're talking about. The golf course floods, Cherry Hills Drive has flooded before, and to me, if they're going to do this subdivision and they have this, this property available, to my understanding, why they would not try to do this off of, of a Dead Horse Mountain rather than come through our, our subdivision. I, I do know that the city of Fayetteville likes growth and likes income, but to me, our planning commission says no, and I, I would like to ask you all to vote no also. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to address us on this?
I'm Sue Garland, and I live on River Meadows Drive, and I just, everyone who has spoken has, has made excellent points, everyone who lives in River Meadow, in Stone Bridge Meadows. So I won't repeat any of what's been said, but what I do want to point out is that when that traffic, that additional traffic comes into the subdivision through our subdivision that already exists, that additional traffic is going to be going across a very small historic bridge called the Stone Bridge. And we're caught, I've heard people call it a culvert, which it certainly serves to be, but that little historic bridge is going to take a lot of traffic, it already does, and it's going to take a whole lot more traffic. So if you want to talk about history, I'm relatively new here, but I was very excited to discover that why that is called Stone Bridge. It is because there is a little stone bridge that's been there since the, I think, the 1800s, and I would certainly hate to see more traffic dragged across that bridge, particularly during the, during the development period. Also, we can talk about construction period and the, the extra traffic, but when those 30, however many houses go up, then that's permanent increase in the, the traffic that's going to go through an already existing subdivision. So I just want to encourage you all to think about that, also to come out and look and see what we're talking about, come on a rainy day. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to address us on this?
Tom Lookdemeyer. I also live on Cherry Hills. I just made a couple notes. Like the gentleman said, that lives on River Meadows, their property is basically, a lot of properties back there are thoroughfare now. And, and you can look at property values in that area, and I know the gentleman who spoke for the, to have this done is saying it, it's going to increase the property values, but our property values on our side are higher than property values on the other side, and that's a thoroughfare, and that's one of the things that goes, that hurts those, I mean, my estimation, that's what, that's hurt, what's hurting some of those property values, because we're all in the same neighborhood. There is only one way out for those, those homes, and that's a long way to go back. Fire, if, God forbid, fire trucks got to go back there. They've got a small road to access to go all the way back to those homes. Those retention ponds, I think, one of the things I heard too, that was really the only thing I had until I heard the gentleman talk about the retention ponds and, and run off from that subdivision going to the retention ponds. Those retention ponds only hold a gentle rain, that's it, and that water is gone. Once it dries, once it, rain stops, that water's gone. Any extra water that comes in there off of rain is going to wash away, it's going to be right in that creek, and like one of my other neighbors said, it's going to be... in that creek, and like one of my other neighbors said, it's going to be covering the road down on Dead Horse Mountain. So, that's just going to add to it. You cannot put concrete structures in there and not expect that runoff to be significantly more than it is currently. And, also, like the gentleman said, come out and visit. In your visit, look at those two areas where the roads flood out. They're low-rudder areas, and they will flood out, and that cuts off any traffic that can go through there. I'd also invite you to come out at 7:00 in the morning, because that is the time when you'll see that light back up. Before you do construction, significant construction, more than the subdivisions we already have, we're going to have to do some major improvements to that road. One, it's too low, and the other is, that corner around Stonebridge Meadows where it comes onto that light, it's backed up forever. So, come at 7:00 in the morning. I'll scramble you some eggs. We'll put on a pot of coffee. You guys come out there at 7:00 in the morning and look at that traffic, because it's not going to get any better. That is not a, that's not a good road to be adding traffic to. I think there's, I'm totally aligned with, I don't want to see people lose money. I don't want to see people not be able to develop areas. I just don't want to see it be done the wrong way. If you're going to build it, if you're going to build up on that mountain, you know, and that's your property and that's your right, do the infrastructure work that you need to do first. Do it right. If you bring in other investors or whatever it takes, do it the right way. I just don't see this as the right way to do it. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Who would like to address this next?
I'm Sam Devini. I live on Cherry Hills Drive, and I agree with all my neighbors, this should be disallowed.
Could I get your name?
Sam Devini. I think this should be disallowed. Cherry Hills Drive cannot, is not a thoroughfare, and it cannot handle additional traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this? Okay.
Hi, thank you. I'm Karen Mathis. I live on Spyglass Hill in Stonebridge Meadows. And, I just will echo everything that all my neighbors have said. The one thing that hasn't been mentioned, I do invite you to come out as well, and do come after a hard rain. And, I'd like to have you come out in the evenings and just hear the coyotes yipping that are coming off that mountain. If you're going to develop the area, stick to the current zoning. Keep it residential agriculture, and access it through Dead Horse Mountain Road, not through Pumpkin Ridge Drive. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else like to address this on this? Okay. Whoop. Okay. All righty.
Yeah, hi. My name is Greg Zach, and I live on Oakmont in Stonebridge Meadow. I think my neighbors have made many eloquent statements, true statements, I think, many of them in specific, that show a love of the environment, which can't be trumped up. I'd like to point out just one thing, that when we talk about developing a property, the word is kind of curious, it seems to me. If we have a vision that guides Fayetteville through 2020, 2030, and beyond, it's that kind of development also that I think we all have to bear in mind. Some of the things we're developing, in other words, are not simply property or money, but they are environment and community, and I think my neighbors have spoken very eloquently about these values. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the council. What would you all like to do? That's a great idea.
What'd he say?
I'm going to hold it.
I think we've also been invited to tour it.
Yes, and if we vote on it tonight, we certainly can't tour it.
And, we won't have eggs? And, I didn't hear what the lady said, but she offered a nighttime visit, so, but I don't know what's for supper.
But, I will be up early in the morning and here late at night. Okay. So, I assume we'll leave it here on the first reading. Any amendments to that? Yeah, we are. Okay.
For the purpose of the public mayor, the council does set its tours on its agenda session.
Okay. Let's move on to the next item, number five. A resolution to amend the master street plan by removing the bridge connection on Raven Lane over Claver Creek south of Crystal Springs, Phase 3. Jeremy?
Mayor and council, as the mayor announced at the beginning of the meeting, and the city clerk notified you all last week, the applicant emailed us last week requesting to table this item to the date of June 16th for consideration. And, so, rather than present that and then present it again on June 16th, we would recommend this item be tabled to June 16th.
Motion to second to table the resolution. Any comments on that, any discussion on it? Sandra, would you please call the robe?
Janet?
Yes.
Schottmar?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Hetty?
Yes.
Okay. Number six. An ordinance amending Unified Development Code 162.01B2 to add landscape contracting business as a use allowed by conditional use permit in all zoning districts. Kit?
Be ordained by the city council, the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that city council, the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amends the Unified Development Code, Section 16201B2, to add landscape contracting business as an included use under public and private facilities.
Okay. Jim?
Currently, landscape contracting businesses, which exist to perform services for citizens, such as mowing, trimming, mulching, landscape design, and planting, irrigation, installation, are not specifically referenced in our city's chapter on use unit classifications. Because it's not specifically referenced, the code gives guidance to the zoning and development administrator to interpret what use unit this particular use falls within, and it's supposed to be based on the closest, most applicable use within another use unit category. The closest use unit category that falls for landscape contracting is Use Unit 21, which can be found in a number of other types of construction contracting businesses. However, this essentially only allows landscaping businesses to be located within Use Unit 21 in our heavy commercial, light industrial zones. However, these types of businesses are not really industrial in nature in most cases. They can vary dramatically in their scale, from very small scale, very low impact, surrounding properties, and additionally in operations. After meeting with applicants faced with difficulty finding properties even within the city to operate such a business, and after speaking with aldermen tenant, the staff is proposing an ordinance amendment to specifically list landscape contracting businesses within Use Unit 2. Use Unit 2 is our citywide uses by conditional use permit. Plant nurseries are already permitted within that use unit classification, and we felt like that would be a good match for that. It seems to be a natural fit for landscape contracting businesses to be afforded the opportunity to be reviewed in a like manner. What Use Unit 2 requires is a conditional use permit in any zoning district in which it's proposed, so then it could be located anywhere within the city. The planning commission review for compatibility, the size and scale, the operations, traffic, all those noise, all those different types of things. It could set limits of hours of operation, reduce operations based on the surrounding context, screen, things of that nature, basically to create a good neighborhood. We feel like this is a good ordinance amendment for our city code, and appreciate aldermen's support in this, and would recommend approval.
You want to add anything, Jess?
I would just say that when this was brought to my attention, I was surprised that we didn't have it this way, because I know that there were some landscape businesses already, nursery-type businesses, as you mentioned, that were already there. So, I thought this sort of leveled the playing field a little bit, and it doesn't really give any advantage, because you still have to go before the planning commission to do the things that they should do, and anything that needs to be limited can at that point. So, I just think this is a good way to do it, and helps potentially local businesses, and so I think it's a good amendment to.
What questions do we have? Anything? Any public comment on it? Okay. Bring it back to the council.
Make a motion to suspend the rules and move it to the second reading.
Second.
Remember, motion to second to move the second reading. Sandra, would you please call the robe?
Janet?
Yes.
Schottmar?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Hetty?
Yes.
An ordinance amending Unified Development Code, Section 16201B2, to add landscaping contracting business as a use allowed by conditional use permit in all zoning districts.
Okay.
Move, suspend the rules, go to the third and final reading.
Second.
Now, the motion is saying go to third and final reading. Sandra, would you please call the robe?
Janet?
Yes.
Schottmar?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Hetty?
Yes.
An ordinance amending Unified Development Code, Section 162.01B2, to add landscape contracting business as a use allowed by conditional use permit in all zoning districts.
Any final comments from the council? Okay. Sandra, would you please call the robe?
Janet?
Yes.
Schottmar?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Hetty?
Yes.
Janet. Whoop.
You want me to vote twice?
No, that's okay.
Almost got eight votes in.
Eight out of seven. We're doing pretty well.
Not bad. Okay, number seven. An ordinance to amend 167.04J3 off-site forestation to authorize the city council to allow forestation within a nearby city park if determined by the city council to be in the best interest of our citizens. Kit?
Whereas, Section 16704J3 off-site forestation currently requires land which would be planted with mitigation trees by a developer, which cannot reasonably meet the tree preservation requirements on the development site, be owned by the developer. And, whereas such a requirement is normally a very proper and reasonable requirement, but if the city council believes a nearby city park and its neighboring citizens would benefit from forestation, the city council should have the option and authority to allow developers to plant and maintain necessary mitigation trees in a nearby city park. Now, therefore, it be ordained by the city council, the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amend Section 16704J3 off-site forestation by placing all existing wording in subsection A, enacting a new subsection B as shown below. Subsection B. An applicant may plant and maintain mitigation trees needed for the applicant's development as to fulfill the obligation set forth in the Tree Preservation and Protection Chapter in a nearby city park if expressly approved by city council resolution. The city council shall seek advice from the urban forester, Parks and Recreation Department, staff, and citizens about the advisability of forestation of the nearby city park, and may apply express conditions, including requiring irrigation to be installed and regular maintenance to be formed by the applicant.
Okay.
Derek Lynn, city of Fayetteville, urban forester. I'm here in place of my counterpart, Ken Easton, whose name is on your memo. Chapter 167 outlines four principles in which tree preservation requirements may be met with a development. When preservation cannot be fully achieved, planting of new mitigation trees or payment into the tree estuary account may be implemented. As Kit mentioned, this amendment would allow the developer to plant trees on city park property. Currently, 16704J3 off-site forestation allows the developer to plant trees on land also owned by that developer. This would allow, at their request, for the planting and maintenance off-site, and just as currently required with mitigation trees, the trees would be installed, managed, watered, and irrigated by the applicant during the standard three-year establishment period, and staff is recommending approval of this amendment.
Is there any questions from the council?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'd like to say, I'd like to thank the urban forestry department, not only Derek, but also Ken, and also Allison, who I see is here. A situation occurred where there was a large number of mitigation trees a developer needed to plant, and he could have put them all together in a fairly small piece of land that he owned right there by the neighborhood, but he's also very close to another city park that needs some trees. And, in fact, I confirmed this by going to Parks and Recreation Department and talking to Connie and Allison and the urban foresters. And, so, we talked about, well, what could be done? Would it be able to be, we thought it probably made some sense that if a developer would agree to plant and maintain trees in a city park that needs them, that we should at least have the option for the city council to be able to agree to that by city council resolution. And, that's what was brought forward here by the urban forester, and so it's up for your decision.
And, there we are. Do we have any questions? Very good. Is there any public comment on this? Okay, I'm going to bring this back to the council then. What's the wishes of the council?
I'm moved we passed the amendment.
Well, we've got to go to the second reading.
Oh, is it? Do we have to go to the second reading?
Yes, it's an ordinance.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we just need the motion to go.
I'm moved we go to the second reading.
Second.
We have a motion to second. We go to the second reading. Sandra, would you please call the robe?
Janet?
Yes.
Schottmar?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Hetty?
Yes.
An ordinance to amend Section 16704J3 off-site forestation to authorize the city council to allow forestation within a nearby city park if determined by the city council to be in the best interest of our citizens.
Yes.
I guess I do have a question. Is there a reason that we're limiting this to city parks and not including, like, the street right-of-ways for street trees?
Well, there's already requirements for street trees when developers are building. I guess, Jeremy, you might want to explain that, but we do require street trees now with new developments, don't we?
Correct. Actually, our landscape ordinance requires street trees to be planted with at least one per lot for residential developments along all the public trees.
Right, but I'm thinking in terms of, these are mitigation trees, and we needed to, say, put a whole bunch of new street trees along, say, South School Avenue, or some other area where we've been needing to add some trees. This seems like a good opportunity to make that happen.
You know, I did not present that to the urban forestry department, but I certainly don't have any problems if you'd want that to be an option. Sometimes with infilling street trees, I don't know if irrigation is going to be more, is going to be feasible for that where it would be in the park, where you're doing a bunch of them, but I don't know if you all want to address that.
And, I don't know if this is something that, you know, I should just propose an amendment now, or maybe we just hold it on the second reading and have the urban foresters give us some feedback on that.
You want to wait, y'all?
Well, one thing that we were hoping to do is, before these other trees get planted in the wrong place, to have this approval so that we would actually be able to plant them. And, right now, I think we're looking at the Gary Hampton Softball Park that between that and between the head of the field and the creek is pretty much just open space that would be probably served by having some trees planted.
Well, if we did pass it tonight, we could always bring it back, could we not?
You could amend it, too.
Could amend.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and amend it. Well, let's hear what Derek has to say first.
I just wanted to respond to Councilwoman Marsh. I believe that probably is something that we hadn't really thought about, the opportunity to plant along streets. We do currently allow mitigation trees to be planted along street right-of-way in some situations, and so, I understand the timing of planting trees, you mentioned, Kit, but I think that's probably, probably is something good to consider and add in there.
But, you don't think we need to add it tonight?
How does the timing differ from adding it tonight versus?
Well, it just means if this is passed tonight, then hopefully we can get some trees planted before the, during still the tree planting season. It'd be better if it's even earlier. It always takes longer to get things done, obviously, than what we would like.
Mayor, I would have just encouraged the council, if they're going to amend it, to go ahead tonight. I don't see a downside to it, since it actually has to have city council approval to be planted in these other locations anyway, and so you will have control whether they are allowed or not.
We can always bring it back. Yes, Alan?
Well, that was actually just my point, is that we would have to address it case by case anyway, so I don't know what it would hurt.
Okay, then I would propose an amendment to, let me look at the language here for a moment.
Okay.
Okay, so, under Section B, where it says, "An applicant may plant and maintain mitigation trees needed for the applicant's development as to fulfill the obligation set forth in the Tree Preservation and Protection Chapter in a nearby city park," and then I would add, "or public right-of-way if expressly approved by the city council resolution."
Now, the motion is second to amend that also includes streets, basically. Motion is second, to amend that also includes streets, basically. Right? Okay. Any discussion on that? Okay, is there any public comment on the amendment? Okey-dokey. I'll bring it back to the council. Any discussion? All right. Sandra, would you please call the robe?
Tannett.
Yes.
Schottmar.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Hedy.
Yes.
And the amendment also changed the title. An ordinance amends Section 16704J3 off-site forestation to authorize the city council to allow forestation within a nearby city park or public right-of-way if determined by the city council to be in the best interest of our citizens.
Everybody good with that? All righty. Oh, you certainly may.
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly thank Alderman Marsh for foresight here. We don't often realize it, but our streets themselves make up more than half of the public space available in the city, and we tend to think of them as just travel ways for vehicles, but with them having that status of more than half of public space, it's probably more appropriate for us to think of them as front yards, or as parks, or as places to do business, and start to rethink about, you know, just the way we frame streets themselves. So trees are a big part of that, and that's why I think that amendment is so important.
That's good. That's good. All right. Is everybody good? All right. Sandra, would you please call the robe?
Tannett.
Yes.
Schottmar.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Hedy.
Yes.
Okay, number eight. An ordinance to amend Article Nine, Telecommunications Board of the Code of Fayetteville to confirm the changes in state law and to clarify definitions and duties of the board. Kit.
Whereas in 2013, the Arkansas General Assembly passed legislation which effectively ended the use of franchise agreements between cities and communication providers. And whereas the telecommunications board, in its role as an advisory board to the city council, has recommended amendments to the city code to conform with the changes in state law, as well as clarify certain definitions and duties of the board. Now therefore, it be ordained by the city council, City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section One, that Section 33.205 through 33.211 telecommunications board is hereby repealed and Exhibit A attached here, too, and made part of the ear of, is enacted in its place.
Lindsey.
Honorable City Council, my name is Lindsey Smith, Communications Director for the City of Fayetteville. I think city attorney Kit Williams explained this very well. This is an item that comes to you from your telecommunications board as a recommendation. Largely, it started from the 2013 changes to the franchise, that's the state of Arkansas passed through the Arkansas General Assembly. At the time, they also decided to do some update on language for this ordinance. Staff does support this ordinance change, and the telecommunications board wanted me to also thank city attorney Kit Williams for looking over this item before it went back to them for a vote, and he made some good changes that they added into their wording changes as an amendment. We do support this.
What questions do we have in the council on this? Any public comment? Okay, bring it back to the council.
Move, we suspend the rules and go to the second reading.
Second.
The motion is second, go to the second reading. Sandra, would you please call the robe?
Tannett.
Yes.
Schottmar.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Hedy.
Yes.
An ordinance amends Article Nine, telecommunications board of the Code of Fayetteville to conform to changes in state law and to clarify definitions and duties of the board.
Move, we go to the third and final reading.
Second.
The motion is second, go to the third and final reading. Sandra, would you please call the robe?
Tannett.
Yes.
Schottmar.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Hedy.
Yes.
An ordinance amends Article Nine, telecommunications board of the Code of Fayetteville to conform to changes in state law and to clarify definitions and duties of the board.
Any final comments from the council? Okay. Sandra, would you please call the robe?
Tannett.
Yes.
Schottmar.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Hedy.
Yes.
Okay, that concludes our business. What announcements do we have?
Here we have a couple announcements tonight. First, I want to remind citizens and the council that city offices will be closed this coming Monday for the Memorial Day holiday. Also, currently, this week, Thursday, May the 21st, our Parks and Recreation Department is holding a public hearing for the 2016 Outdoor Recreational Grant Program, taking feedback from citizens regarding needs for our parks and our outdoor areas. That will be held at 5:30 PM at Lifestyle Incorporated's main office location, which is at 2590 West Sycamore Street. This is the second public meeting that we've had on this.
Just a second. Lindsey, before you leave, I'd like to call you up to the podium during our announcements. Despite the mayor's best efforts, I'm afraid you all realize that Lindsey, this is her last week, so this is her last time to be appearing in front of you, and I know I've really enjoyed working with you, and I don't want to steal the mayor's thunder if he wants to say anything, but I didn't want you to escape before we recognize that.
But you don't look sad right now.[1710.13]